Good evening, everyone. Looks like all our board members are here. I'm sorry, wait, is Patty? Oh, thank you, thank you. Looks like all our board members are here. Welcome. With that, let's go ahead and call to order the Monday, January 3rd, 2022 organizational meeting of the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. Typically, when we're present in person, we seat the board. Here we are virtually, so I'll acknowledge that the board is present virtually and congratulate our new board members on their swearing in this afternoon. And with that, I'll turn it over to Township Manager Dave Prabalka for the election of officers.
Thank you very much, and thanks, everybody, for joining. I'm gonna do just a quick Zoom intro if I can, just to set some rules, I guess, as we proceed through the regular meeting. And thanks, everyone, for joining us, and I echo Mr. Nini's point. Congratulations to all the new elected officials and look forward to working with the whole board coming into 2022. And that's on behalf of all the leadership team and all staff here at Ferguson Township. And this is the January 3rd reorganizational meeting and regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. They've been advertised as virtual meetings in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act using the Zoom telemeeting platform. There's also an in-person accommodation that's been made available for any public that wants to join us in person tonight. You can see that the main meeting room is there and zoomed in as well. If you're joining the Zoom tonight as a member of the public or as an agent to speak on behalf of an agenda item at any point, if you could just enter your name, municipality of residence, and if applicable, the topic you want to speak about using the chat feature located below the word bubble at the bottom of your screen. Just quickly, the procedural items I usually go through. First, any attendees are asked to remain muted for the duration of the meeting. Members of the public may speak on items when acknowledged by the chair and may unmute their microphones at the appropriate time. Once the speaker has concluded his or her question or comment, I'm just asked that you go back on mute to prevent any disruptions during the regular meeting. And then board members are asked, as always, to indicate their name when either motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes can accurately reflect the action taken. And finally, I'll take a roll call, the Board of Supervisors, to ensure that all members are here and can interact. Please indicate you're here when your name is called. Ms. Caldwell.
Here.
Miss Denini.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Strickland.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Okay, Madam Chair, we have a quorum. I think your first action would be to take a motion to nominate me as temporary or to appoint me as temporary chair.
Okay, I will then entertain a motion to appoint Dave Prabalka Township Manager as temporary chair.
This is Patty. I'll move that we appoint Dave Prabalka Township Manager as the temporary chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tiara. Any discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Dave, thank you. You've been appointed temporary chair.
Thank you, and my first action as temporary chair will be to take nominations for the position of Chair of the Board of Supervisors. So if anybody wants to nominate anybody, you can do so just by indicating.
This is Patty. I moved that the Board of Supervisors elect Laura Denini as Chair of the Board of Supervisors for 2022.
Laura's nominated. Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. I'll close the nominations at this point. We'll take a vote on Miss Denini as Chair of the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Dave, and thank you very much to my fellow board members for allowing me this honor to serve you and the community.
You? Me?
With that, I would entertain any motion, entertain any nominations for Vice Chair.
This is Patty, and I move that the Board of Supervisors elect Lisa Strickland as the Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors for 2022.
Thank you for that nomination. Do I have any other nominations for Vice Chair? With that, I'll close the nominations and take a vote. All in favor of Lisa Strickland for Vice Chair, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next, I'll... Thank you, Lisa. Next, I'll entertain a motion for the board to appoint, I'm sorry, I'll entertain nominations for Secretary or Treasurer. Dave Prabalka is the candidate in this, in this item.
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors appoint Dave Prabalka as the Secretary Treasurer.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Okay, with that, I'll close the nominations. All in favor of Dave Prabalka as Secretary, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign?
Our second date, my husband accidentally...
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt, but can you please mute your microphones if you're not speaking? Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Next up, and thank you for your service as Secretary. We have our annual appointments. You can find in the agenda, the first grouping of those is listed in the agenda, and there is also recommended motion. And so I would, at this point in time, entertain a motion on the annual appointments. If you'd like, I can read that list. At your pleasure. It is found in the agenda, however. In lieu of reading it, I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, I can make that motion. Sorry, I was just reading the two different ones, so I'll go by the bottom one. And this is Lisa. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors appoint those individuals or agencies as recommended by the Township Manager as annual appointments for the year 2022.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
This is Patty. I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any in favor? Any opposed? Same sign? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have our appointments to the authorities, boards, and commissions. As narrated in your agenda, we did contact incumbents to request or to learn if they were interested in reappointment. We also solicited applications. You'll find in your agenda a list of candidates that would like to be reappointed or considered for appointments. There is there is also a motion that's recommended in your agenda, and I could entertain that motion at this time. This is Patty. Oh, go ahead, Lisa.
I'll move that the Board of Supervisors appoint the slate of applicants to the authorities, boards, and commissions as described in the agenda.
I'll second. This is Patty.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the mo... I'm sorry, Dave.
I apologize for interrupting the Spring Creek Watershed Commission. Oh, I apologize. I'm ahead of the agenda here, but I believe we have everything. This is ABC appointments. Okay.
Understood. I myself was, I was there and then back, and then, yes, so...
Committee assignments mixed up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe we're in voice vote at this point.
There we go.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? And motion passes unanimously. And next up, we have the appointments to the COG and regional committees. These represent some returning to committee appointment. These identified in the agenda. Some are new appointments. Obviously, since we have new supervisors, there is one item that we received information after the publication of the agenda, and that is the Spring Creek Watershed Commission, which is found at the bottom of page four. And currently, that identifies Ms. Strickland as the primary and myself as the alternate. We have since received information that, I believe, Dave, please correct me, is it Mr. or Mark Garlicki? Is that correct? Okay. Mr. or doctor, I'm not sure if you even know that. But he is a member, he is at Penn State and has experience on our climate and sustainability. No, our climate action body here at the township and was willing to also serve in this position. And so I would like to entertain a motion at this time to replace Ms. Strickland as the primary with Mr. Garlicki, and I would love if Ms. Strickland would entertain being the alternate in that situation. Thank you, Lisa. So I would entertain that motion as a change in this table of candidates that were presented prior to entertaining the motion that we move these candidates forward to appointment. So the motion I'd like to entertain at this point is Mr. Garlicki serving as the primary and Ms. Strickland serving as the alternate for the Spring Creek Watershed Commission.
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors approve Mr. Garlicki as the primary representative and Ms. Strickland as the alternate for the 2022 Spring Creek Watershed Commission.
Thank you.
This is Lisa. I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the matter? Okay, all in favor of that change on this table, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Motion passes unanimously, and now I will entertain the motion found in the agenda to appoint this slate of officials as presented and amended.
This is Lisa. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors appoint the slate of officials as presented and amended in the agenda to COG and regional committees for the year 2022.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
This is Patty. I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the matter? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have the appointment of the Police Pension Advisory Board. Dave, did you want to say perhaps a few words about service to this board? Thank you.
Yes, I can. Thank you. So the Police Pension Advisory Board has a co-fiduciary responsibility over the uniformed personnel's defined benefit pension plan. So typically, there is one member of the Board of Supervisors to join the Township Manager, and then two members of the pension unit, the participants in the pension plan themselves. We meet quarterly with our pension advisor, PNC Wealth Management, to receive updates on the performance of the defined benefit plan portfolio and any changes in asset allocation, investment strategies, investment policies would be recommended by that body, but ultimately subject to approval by both the Board of Supervisors from Township as well as the participants in the plan. So in over the last several years, Steve Miller was our representative on this pension advisory board. Given that Mr. Miller is no longer on the board, we need to find a replacement for that role. Now, I should say that all of you as supervisors are co-fiduciaries to this pension plan. But this specific, the representative from the board would act as liaison, report back to the board with any developments or changes or any updates of a general nature that the board may be interested in hearing. I can answer any questions, but I think that really kind of gives the gist of it.
Thank you, Dave. I think that's a good gist, and, you know, I really I'm not sure if any supervisors had given any thought to this over the weekend since the agenda came out. I had not really had any conversations with folks, and so I don't know actually who feels like they're able to provide, you know, service on this. So I would love to entertain any thoughts prior to calling for nominations in terms of, Dave?
I'm sorry, if I may, just one more thing I forgot to add. Understanding of the market and how it works and operates and investment strategies is not a prerequisite of this position. It really is. Anybody can do it regardless of your understanding or your background or awareness of financial matters and investment strategies and things like that. So if you're intimidated or apprehensive about it because you're concerned that you may not have that understanding, I can tell you, don't worry about that. It's laid out in a very understandable and easily digestible way, and that's what we have PNC for, that, the technical side of it.
That's a good point. Thank you. Any question, any more questions for Dave before I ask if folks are interested in this before we take nominations? Or I guess it's it's a motion, so. Is anyone interested in that, in that service? Okay.
I can do it.
Okay, okay, great, 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 great. Okay, thank you. That is fantastic. So there's a recommended motion in your agenda, and Tiara has volunteered for that, so I'll entertain that motion.
This is Hillary. I'd like to move that the Board of Supervisors appoint Tiara Williams as the Board of Supervisors representative on the Police Pension Advisory Board.
You do have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Just many thanks for that. And all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? A motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up, designation of depository. Dave, did you want to introduce this at all?
Nothing really beyond what's in the narrative, so as the narrative suggests, the board by action and by motion establishes that both a primary depository and an investment depository, I guess, through this action, but any FDIC insured bank is also captured in the motion, just in the event that there's perhaps a better rate through a certificate of deposit or something else that we might be able to capitalize on. Eric Anderson, our Finance Director, monitors these throughout the year and tries to get the best returns, understanding that our investment policy is very limited because we have to be very conservative in how we invest taxpayer money. So we typically deposit them in CDs and things like that that are small growth, but allow us to have that assurance that we're not going to be risking them. So again, we're risking any of that. So we are recommending that the board appoint Jersey Shore State Bank as the primary depository and any FDIC insured bank and the PA Local Government Investment Trust for investments as provided for in our investment policy statement at the township.
Thank you, Dave. Would a board member like to move that motion?
This is Lisa. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors appoint Jersey Shore State Bank as the Township's primary depository and any FDIC insured bank and the PA Local Government Investment Trust for investments per the Township's investment policy.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
This is Tiara. I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion from board members? I say, all right, seeing none. Ms. Dekler, I saw your hand up. Do you have a question?
Yes, um. I, uh, this is just a question, and I was wondering this prior to this as well. I would like somebody to look into Kish Bank. I find that their rates are better. And they have, they have all different kinds of weird little 18-month CDs that you can take the money out in seven days anyway. I mean, they've got a lot of stuff, and they seem to have a lot of rates that are, I mean, rates are lousy now anyway, but they are better than what they are elsewhere, so I don't, I don't know if you can ask Eric about that. Just, just have him check out Kish.
I'd be happy to look at Kish. We do basically round robin. We look at different rates all the time, but I'll definitely reach out to Kish and see what the rates are.
Yeah, it's just a thought. I know everything is not good, but they seem to be a tiny bit better, so, you know, half of a percent can make a difference if it's a big ward.
That's all. Thank you, Pam. Thank you very much, Eric, for being right on that. I figured you did some round robin checking, but it's great to hear that confirmed. Thank you so much. So we have a motion on the table, and we're ready for a vote. Please, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next up is establishing our meeting dates for 2022. Dave, did you want to introduce this?
So with the agenda is a draft, I guess, of a schedule for regular meetings. They reflect all of the holiday schedule, that schedules that fall on the Monday, either the first or the third Monday. So there's actually quite a few of them. In fact, our next meeting on January 17th, other, well, on January 18th would otherwise fall on January 17th. So I really don't have anything to add. We can answer any questions that the board may have, but it's all fairly well-defined in the agenda packet.
Okay, are there any questions before I entertain a motion? Okay, I'll like to entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Hillary.
Yeah, I would like for the Board of Supervisors to open up discussion about potentially changing either time or, or date. Simply to be more accommodating for attending either school board meetings or other municipality meetings.
Okay, I'll second Hillary's motion. This is Patty.
Okay, I think, I think we could have discussion without emotion, per se, before entertaining emotion, but either way, I think would be fine. Hillary's introduced a topic, and I'm sure we can all discuss that. Do you want to elaborate at all first, Hillary, prior to discussion?
Sure, I know that there are several other, you know, council meetings as well as school board meetings, and we've got a lot of, you know, not only are several members of the Board of Supervisors pretty engaged in the community, but I'm sure, you know, if, if, if at all possible, to try and make this schedule a little bit easier for residents to be able to attend multiple meetings as well, if interested. I would, I would like to see if there's a way that we can be a little bit more accommodating.
Okay, thank you, and just not to change from board discussion to staff. However, Dave, is there anything prior to our discussion that we should be aware of as we're discussing? That you can think of other than general things?
You know, the only thing I'd plan, the board's talked about this a number of times over the years and not necessarily in with the interest of freeing up time or not overlapping with other meetings, but mostly to enable live broadcasting of Township meetings. We do have the ability in our main meeting room for CNET to broadcast live on Channel 7, but because we overlap State College-Burrows meeting dates and times, we compete with them, and since they were doing this first, they have priority. So we haven't been able, while we broadcast live on the YouTube channel, we haven't been able to broadcast live on CNET's normal cable, you know, cable channel. So, you know, there's a possibility that the changing could enable that. In the past, though, it's not been something that the board's thought warranted that, a change in meeting data or time, but maybe that's changed.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Hillary. So I guess we could just open it up to board discussion. Would anyone like to give some thought to that out loud?
I have a question. Because I know that the meetings have to happen in some, in a sort of a sequence based on other meetings that we have that relate, and so is there a specific day that is just not feasible based off the schedule that's already kind of in circulation? Because I know some meetings have to be before others, so I just want, I don't want to suggest a day, and then it completely sets the entire motion of how the meetings are off, if that makes sense.
It makes sense to me. I guess I'll, I'll say one way I think about that. It's not quite the same as what you're saying. I'm thinking about staffing the meetings. And so, for example, if the manager also staffs the Parks Committee meeting in Ferguson and the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Committee, then there would be conflicts with that. I, I think that the sequencing would only be relevant if it was maybe a work session we were talking about. Or I think that that topic might have come up when there was an idea of having a non-action meeting and then making sure that the action meetings followed any needs for COG to get back to general forum, but I'm glad you brought it up. I don't, I can't decide if that's relevant to this discussion now yet or not. Dave, do you want to comment on either or both of those?
Sure, I think it's, I think the one, the main one, I mean, your points missed in any about staffing other meetings are absolutely correct. I think depending on what time you would schedule these meetings, you just want to be mindful of some of those other conflicts. We are ready, the way the meeting's schedules are set up now, have a little bit of an overlap with our own tree commission, for example, which also meets on the third Monday of the month, and it's, I believe, they begin their meetings at 5:00 PM. So when they run long, they do occasionally overlap board meetings. The Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee and the Park and Rec Committee both meet at 4:00 PM. So if the meetings stay at 7:00, probably not an issue if they get to, if they're bumped back earlier. Now, those are both on Thursdays. So they're different Thursdays of the month, but if they get bumped back in time, you know, a little bit earlier, that may run into a conflict. Something, the biggest thing to keep in mind is probably general forum. That which meets the fourth Monday of the month. So I would avoid the fourth week of the month, if that was something that the board were interested in, in, in doing and making a change. Perhaps you'd want to keep it the first and third weeks, but move to a different day. If that's what, what the interest is, but I, I would want to check with CNET on the, on the, on their ability to cover, not just for the live streaming purposes, but also even if they're not streaming live, we want to make sure that they have coverage. So we want to make sure that they have the staff and resources to be able to meet all of their obligations, which there are many, even outside the center region. So I would probably want to check with them, whatever's talked about today. If the board is interested in moving, you know, perhaps they'll just give me a little time to verify with CNET, with Cindy Hawn and Matt over there, Matt Burns, that they can, that they can accommodate that change in schedule and then maybe we can solidify it at the next meeting or something.
Okay, great. Hillary?
Uh, it looks as though, just looking at the, uh, the COG calendar and probably seeing, you know, all of the move, all of the meetings that we already have that are kind of bumped to Tuesdays. I'm wondering if folks would be interested in the first and third Tuesdays of every month at seven PM, if that works for people?
Um, I don't, I don't disagree and it's, and it is a good point. Majority of our, a lot of our meetings are going to be getting bumped to that, to those Tuesdays anyway. I don't know if the board wants to like try something out and then if that doesn't work, we reassess. But I am, I am one of those people who, um, who is involved with other things and, and would like to attend and would like for more people to attend. And if sometimes if it's between Ferguson and the school board, some people might choose school board. So I'm, I'm big on community engagement and I want there to be as much community participation as possible. So that's my two cents on it.
I, um, Dave Modricar. Hello?
Hello? I was just looking at the main meeting room calendar. When does the zoning hearing board meet?
Oh.
Zoning hearing board is the fourth Tuesday of the month. So if, if the board wanted, we're doing the first and third, there wouldn't be an overlap, the fourth, which I, I think generally avoiding that fourth week because of general forum and how that, uh, that lies would, would probably be a good, uh, good measure, but.
Okay, two votes for not the, not the fourth week. Patty?
How many buttons to click? Sorry about that. Um, so yeah, I, I guess I don't really have a problem whether it's, it's Monday or Tuesday. So I agree with what the others had said about, um, having more community involvement. So I, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other.
Thanks, Patty. Lisa, did you have any thoughts that you want to share?
Um, I think Thursdays would be difficult if, um, I'd like to avoid that if we could. So, that's the, I'm trying to look at a calendar here. So I think that would be a, a potential conflict. For me.
I, I, I think that avoiding Thursdays, they're, they're so loaded with meetings. I would definitely agree with that. What do you think about Tuesdays? To, uh, first and third, uh, first and third Tuesdays?
Yeah, I'd be okay with Tuesdays. I guess Wednesday might be the other difficult day. So yeah, Tuesdays. Tuesdays would be okay.
I'm sorry, I thought that's what we were talking about, the first and third Tuesdays. That's the one I'm, I'm okay with. Hi. Yeah, I think we're honing it down at this point as something to consider. Does anyone have up? I, I think, I, I, I think there's a positive, two positive changes that I could see. And one, other than what has been pointed out in terms of, um, freeing us up to go to different meetings. Can't, almost can't believe I'm saying that. Uh, but also the CNET livestream, we could explore that, I guess. Correct? Is that correct, Dave? With no additional audio changes, we could explore the CNET live because it's more of a scheduling with their equipment issue than a, okay. Um, and I think there might be an additional benefit. There's a COG calendar that includes all the other municipal calendars. I wondered, first, can we check and see if we're creating another conflict? But I think the benefit, though, is that what would happen is executive committee meeting would happen prior to our meeting. And so if there's any lingering questions that would be coming through to general forum that we wanted to talk about after executive session, we could, if we hadn't already added it to that agenda, we could move to add it. So it would provide flexibility in being responsive, I think, to any COG needs that come up. But is, does college or somebody, somebody meet on Tuesdays, uh, first and third? Just to be clear, I'm okay with it, but we might also be having a different conflict. Dave, do you have that calendar up?
I do have the calendar up. Uh, it looks like it may not be populated yet because other municipalities are all doing their reorganization meetings and setting their dates. Um, it looks like just if I go back, um, into 2021, let me just look at November real quick. Okay, so we've got.
Thanks. It might be Wednesdays and Thursdays, but, um, CCMPO Lisa is Tuesdays. Is that fourth also? Fourth, something Tuesday at six PM. We have it right in the agenda here. Let me.
Yeah, that's Tuesdays. That's the fourth Tuesday. The other one I have is UAJA that I'll be sitting on until that is filled. And I don't know when that is.
Currently Wednesdays. Wednesday's, third Wednesday.
Oh, right, right.
Third Wednesday, yeah. So it's, yeah. And we don't have to fully decide this today, but we certainly can. But, um, uh, the purpose of this agenda item is really not to meet a state requirement, but so that we can be really transparent with the residents and publish this on our website and also for our knowledge, we can get everything on the calendar, obviously, but, you know, if we wanted, it doesn't seem like there's uncertainty, but we wouldn't have to come to, to a decision right now if we, if we were nervous about it.
Right. So, so maybe what the board wants to do, since our next meeting is on a Tuesday anyway, uh, and that's how we have it scheduled, that, that'll give us time to just research. I, I think you're, I think that does seem like it's going to work. Perhaps there's something, you know, there's a variable on CNET that I'm, I'm missing. So maybe that'll give us time to check in with CNET on the livestream or the live broadcast capability rather. And, um, you know, identify any other potential conflicts. And then we can present this back to the board on January eighteenth for your final review and approval with those amended dates stuck in there.
That, uh, that sounds reasonable to me as a path forward. Others? Tiara?
I just had a question because I know when Hillary first asked, she said days, but I thought I heard, I thought I heard you say time. So were you thinking something different than seven PM? Or were you just focusing on the days? I just wanted to make sure I was clear.
It was an either or situation. I know that there's been, you know, discussion about like, well, if we bumped it earlier, or if we just transferred the evening, just trying to see like what kind of works into like the jigsaw puzzle of calendars best.
Okay. Well, that was my only question. I wasn't, I'm not opposed to, you know, us changing it to six thirty or anything, but I'm not going to promote that right now. We can talk about it next time, you know?
That sounds good. Uh, Dave, do you feel like you're of enough direction to find out all the rest of the facts and then bring it back at our, our Tuesday meeting?
First and third Tuesdays instead of Mondays at seven PM. I'll check to see if there's any other conflicts. If not, I'll put it on the agenda for your approval on Tuesday, next meeting.
And, and if we at that time did want to change the time, maybe you should just research that wi, a window, a general window, uh, Tuesday evening. So like, what if we started at six? Wouldn't want to start at eight, but, uh, just so we don't have to go back to the drawing board again. Great, great. Thank you. All right. So, uh, we don't actually need a motion at all on this, uh, item and will then, uh, see it next time and move to public hearings. So first up, we have a public hearing on a resolution establishing the agenda order of business for 2022. Dave, did you want to introduce this?
I sure can. Um, it's been the board's practice to, well, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm one back. So the, the, there's a, this is done by resolution each year. It sets the agenda order of business. What you'll find in, as an attachment on the agenda is a, a little bit of a modification from what we did in 2021 and in years prior. Specifically shifting reports from the end of the agenda, the regular meeting up towards the, the center or the, the, the front of it, which would be, um, immediately after approval of the minutes. So the way it's proposed in the resolution would be the approval of the minutes after public comment. And then any authority board and commission reports. So anybody who's reporting quarterly on SLO Library, University Area Joint Authority, State College Borough Water Authority, et cetera. After that would be any special reports, uh, which are proposed to be divided into four thematic areas. The following themes, diversity, equity, inclusionary initiatives, township and fiscal responsibility, community and economic development and environmental. So those are typically, there's a lot that falls under those four umbrellas, but those are typically the, the common themes that we see on special reports. Following that would be any COG and regional committee report uh, from any COG committees that you all represent, as well as Spring Creek Watershed Commission and a few others. And then followed by staff reports, managers report, public works director, chief of police, et cetera. And then we would essentially, the rest of the agenda order as proposed remains intact the way it was uh, in 2021 with unfinished business and then new business communications and calendar items and then adjournment.
Thank you, Dave. Um, and then I'll just, I have been, just add, uh, that I have been thinking a fair amount about a, a good way to try to, um, move our, our regular meetings along a little bit more rapidly. So, um, I wanted to communicate that verbally because that information isn't contained in the resolution. That's not typically the level of detail that one might see. But I did want to convey, um, I know that, uh, to, in particular to the new supervisors, I know that you've seen our meetings on CNET, you've attended them and you have experienced as, as we have, um, a lot of the reports being verbal in nature. And, uh, there's been some, um, feedback, uh, about the, the benefit of maybe having them written, um, with a shorter time window, uh, for discussion. So my intention, um, in that, that report section uh, is for the vast majority of those reports to be provided in written form. And then as opposed to the ten fifteen minute, uh, reports that you might, uh, be familiar with, have like a two to a three minute window for questions, uh, or feedback. So my thought with that restructuring, uh, would be that we could flow rather quickly through that uh, section on reports and then move into the discussion items and, um, it, it, it hopefully will run a bit more efficiently. Um, so those were my thoughts on it. So I wanted to make sure that that was conveyed as we consider this item. Um, Patty?
Um, so yeah, that sounds great to me. And I just, so if we were writing our report, then we would need it to get it in to be on the agenda, right?
Right. And, um, I guess what I'll do at this point for our discussion here about this is because it's a public hearing, first I'll ask for any public input in the public hearing. Um, and then we can continue to, to discuss uh, what that might look like. And then I'll entertain a motion when we come to some understanding together. So first I'll, I'll entertain any public input i, uh, in this public hearing, uh, if anyone would care to comment. Okay, I'm seeing none. So I will close the public hearing and then resume, uh, I'm sorry, Bill. I, I acknowledge that, uh, prior to closing the hearing, um, you're, you were searching for your raised hand. So please do take the floor.
Thank you, Laura. Yes, I, I'm not as quick on the buttons sometimes as, uh, some other people are. One of, and I don't know how to resolve this, but since we've got all of you discussing this, this agenda and the sequence kind of thing, I at least will bring it up. It would be nice if, when we have particular items that, uh, we want to encourage a lot of public support or public input on, that we somehow be able to advertise that item for a specific time period in your meeting. I know when we went through the whole stormwater thing, one of the frustrations that came out of that was we never were quite sure, those of us on the public side of things, when it was, we, we knew the order of the agenda, but what time it got to that point, uh, where the discussion varied and people fell off and, 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 and so on. I don't know how you, how you fix that. But on the other hand, I think it's worth some discussion time to see if we can, we can come up with a process by which, uh, certain items historically going for the year, um, that, that we want that public input on, we're able to advertise when that will be in the agenda within a window of maybe ten minutes or so, uh, as opposed to having to wait till ten thirty and then, you know, people have already come and gone. I don't know how you solve it, but, but I bring it up for your discussion because you're talking about a number of these kinds of issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill. Dave, do you have any thoughts on that? Has that been proposed before? Have you thought through that before? I don't fully understand the ins and outs of the actual advertising. I can't really speak to that capability and whatnot. So could you briefly address that before we, um, go on to another perhaps public comment, if there are any, and then discussion?
I mean, you, you can advertise however you'd like. I mean, there are critical things that we need to include in the advertisements, announcements of public hearings, the topics, et cetera. But, um, if you wanted to include a timeframe, uh, in which a, a specific topic would be discussed, that would be fine. I think the bigger question is how is the board going to adjudicate which matters are of public significance? In other words, what you're kind of being asked to do is say, okay, this specific agenda item ranks more highly, I guess, for lack of a better way to put it, than perhaps a land development plan where perhaps there's maybe one property owner, but that property owner is there for his or her land development plan approval and they're paying a professional engineer to maybe represent their plan in front of the board. And so, you know, do you want to put that in the front, you know, being respectful of the, the cost, uh, that impact to them? Do you want to put that in the back? I mean, those are just kind of the decisions that make being the arbiter of agenda items, at least insofar as you're trying to decide which is of greater public interest, a little bit more challenging, I think, than what has, has been suggested, suggested. It may sound good, but I think in application, it's going to be a little bit difficult to administer.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, so I, I, when you were speaking, it also did bring to mind, um, Bill, to also be clear about my intention is to, uh, really in a very refined manner, um, in, uh, identify time periods. So hopefully, what we're, we can do is we can look at the agenda and see six reports, three minutes each equals eighteen minutes. And because they're written and we're holding to that timeframe in a more, I, I believe in a more straightforward manner. I, I, I hope that it will be more predictable. And I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't consider what you brought to the table, but what I, my hope is, is that the need for it diminishes as we get better with sticking to those windows. And then, uh, the thought of if it, I think the difference between the two examples Dave gave, the land development the land development plan, which is relevant because all those professionals are sitting there just billing the hours, waiting for their agenda item to come up. And, and I, I appreciate that. I think the, the stormwater fee relates to a, a, an item where we know there's going to be a lot of public input. And most land development plans don't really garner that, uh, change in where the trees are and whatnot, like, and these kinds of things. So, so I wonder if the work session is a tool to address the problem. So with that said, um, I'll entertain further discussion from the rest of the board. Um, oh, I'm sorry, we're still in public hearing. Do any other citizens want to comment on this item before we close the public hearing and go to full discussion? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and, uh, let's go to discussion on the, it's the agenda order of business is the discussion. Um, Bill brought up, um, advertising, uh, specific time for certain discussions. And we could discuss that, but I wanted to ask Dave, um, is that relevant directly to the order of agenda items, which is the, what we're going to be moving? Um, or is that just a larger question about? It's not really about the order of the items. It's about what content should go into the, the advertisement?
Sort of. It's good guidance for how we prepare the agendas, but what you can do is if there is an item of specific public interest, and we're starting to see a lot of people come and you know as a board that they're probably here for specific items, you can always move that one up in, in, on the, on the fly, so to speak. It doesn't, I think accommodate what Bill's asking for, so that people can plan accordingly per se. But maybe if there is an item, you start to see a lot of people coming in, you can move that up. And the board's done that in the past. So there, there are some tools that you can use. Perhaps it doesn't announce in advance when they can expect an agenda item to come up for discussion, but maybe it'll address uh, those, those individual needs as they arise. But I don't think there's anything that has to be covered in the agenda order of business, if, if that's what you're asking.
That is what I'm asking. I was wondering if we could entertain a motion. Uh, and then go to discussion again and continue discussion of Bill's point, uh, if moved to do so. Uh, but it really wouldn't affect the motion. So I would at this time entertain the motion that's found in your agenda.
Uh, this is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution establishing the agenda order of business for two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
This is Lisa. I'll second.
Thank you very much. And, uh, now let's go ahead and continue with any discussion. And so the main topic is the order of agenda items. Um, and one thought, uh, has been brought in by a, a resident, um, that is likely not to affect that, but something that if you feel moved to discuss at this point in time, we can. Lisa.
Um, I'm comfortable with the order of the agenda. I think to Bill's point, the hybrid model that we're following right now is really convenient in that it does allow people to just check in as opposed to sitting in a room waiting for their item. Uh, so I think that is helpful. And I think he might also be talking about a less formal advertisement of a time than what's, um, in our, uh, required advertisement for meetings. So that could be something more easily accommodated. Um, they, just basing it on the times we're providing the agenda for discussions leading up to a certain item. So if we're looking at something less formal, that might be more manageable. It seem, it would seem to me to be very difficult to advertise a time of a particular discussion. And I feel like that is just asking for problems. So I would be really, really hesitant to do something like that. But I think he might be talking about something less formal. Uh, I don't know. Uh, and I think that might be, that might be more possible.
Others?
Um, I understand where, well, you know what? I'll let him, I'll let him speak. He's raising his hand and I'll, and I'll comment after, after you.
Great. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Uh, we've already had some, some thoughts on this. I think the issue that, that comes to mind over the last, not just this last year, but over several years is predictability in the, in the length of the schedule uh, of, of agenda items. Somehow in which we can communicate to the public that at approximately eight o'clock, we're going to stop where we are in the agenda. And this item, because of its our desire to have it come into the, in, into the discussion, will, will, uh, uh, be put next and then we'll go back to finishing the agenda. I think it's more a, a predictability kind of thing. And the way we get there, uh, there may be a variety of ways to get there. Uh, but, uh, I'm trying to maximize the opportunity for the general public uh, and residents of Ferguson to, to know when an item is going to be in the discussion and they can then participate. Uh, and, and it, it may be, it may be that we've gotta look at this over a period of, of the next two or three months and, and decide how it would work best. But it is more of a predictability kind of thing than anything else. Uh, trying to decide what's most important versus what's not most important wasn't one of the things that, that I had in mind. Uh, but it, I, I think we can, we can do better than we've done in the past in terms of encouraging people to participate, whether it's live or whether it's virtual, because having them sit in the meeting room uh, is, is just as onerous sometimes as wa- waiting till ten thirty at night before that topic comes up. Just my thoughts.
Thanks, Bill, for the clarification. Tiara, I'm gonna bounce back to you. The public hearing is closed. I'll bounce back to Jeremy after, after you, but um, you seated the floor to Bill, so I wanted to just head back to you first. And Jeremy, looks like he disappeared. I'm sorry. So it'll give Jeremy a chance to get back on too.
Um, yeah, no, I, I, I understand what Bill was saying, and I think he kind of clarified what I thought. I didn't, I didn't get from him that it was about what is most important and what is not most important. I think what I'm getting from him is being able to come to a meeting that starts on seven and being able to speak at a time that, that's, that's decent without having to stay two or three hours, right? And so I think what we're trying to do is cut the three hours completely and figure out how to make things shorter and still give people time to, to comment. And, um, I, I don't know if it would be better if, when we had public input, it would just all be in one specific session and not so much as public input line by line. Maybe that would be an easier way for us to come to a certain time or a certain mark, so to speak, maybe. Um, versus going line by line and letting people input in that way. Um, so I think that, I think there's room to discuss it and I don't think that it would be, it will be figured out in this meeting. So I think, but I think there's definitely room to discuss it. And I, I agree with Bill that we want the community to be able to come in and, and give their input and we want to hear from them. So that, that's my sense. Thank you.
Thank you much. And did Jeremy drop off? I saw him with his hand up, Jeremy Thompson, and now I'm not seeing that is, is, uh, it appears that he is not with us at this point in time. So, um, he's on. Hopefully he'll, he'll be able to rejoin. Any other board discussion?
Laura, Hillary. It looks as though Jeremy's still on. If possible, I'd like to see the floor to Jeremy.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just don't see him anywhere right now.
He put his hand down, so he probably skipped all the way back to the end of your block, so to speak.
Uh, Jeremy, would you still like to comment?
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm Jeremy, uh, resident of Park Forest here in Ferguson Township. Uh, just concurring with what Bill said and Tiara said, uh, just probably be, keep length of meetings in mind. I would maybe suggest maybe certain times a year, maybe consider three meetings a month to kind of spread out agenda items. So a meeting isn't going into like four or five hours or more. Um, I think it definitely would be helpful to the public. That way nobody's necessarily staying up late at night trying to get a point across, but also it will make you as supervisors a little more effective in your meetings because there is scientific evidence that a meeting that does go on for beyond two or three hours does start to become a little less effective. And you all know, and I know from our one, one AM excursions. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. So any other, Lisa?
Yeah, I'll just, um, comment on Jeremy's comment. Thanks for that. Um, I think noting that it, we've discussed in the past, having a third meeting in the month to discuss maybe some, you know, items that require a longer period of discussion or maybe assigning uh, certain very specific items to a work session, um, maybe a non-voting meeting. So that's been discussed. And I hope that we can talk about that this year because I think, um, it does add predictability to have um, those times assigned where you know you can either, well, we've done many work sessions like this. And so I think to have it um, set as a known time would help in transparency and predictability. And, you know, it's something that the borough does. And so I think we've had different, uh, work sessions on different topics and they're always at different times. And so I think it would be helpful to have those at a set time. So I'm hoping we can talk about that this year and uh, and maybe move forward with that because there, you know, there often are a lot of items on our agenda and, um, it can be really difficult to get through all of them. So, uh, I, I think that's a really good point you made. Thank you.
Their thoughts? Um, I'll, uh, uh, yeah, I, I, I agree with really everything that's been said and all of the strategies that's, that have been recommended. Um, I think they're all worthwhile. Um, and I would say that and, and natural time, if we did want to consider, and I, I cert- I really don't have an agenda to push on this, but if we did want to consider, um, adding a, a third meeting a month has been suggested just to establish that date in folks' minds with the full knowledge that that, the plan is to cancel that if at all possible. Um, we did move the neck, the discussion of the meeting dates to the next meeting. So it would give everybody, everybody time to think about that as a strategy if we want to e- employ that. Um, in addition to the time constraints and hopefully rapidly moving through reports and being more efficient. Um, and then I'll add one other item that I didn't add before that's about how I would envision moving through our agenda. Um, when folks try to predict a time, you know, it, there are times on the agenda, but having them more refined for each person that is reporting or speaking. Um, it used to be that we'd have twenty minutes for this whole section. And so for me, I wouldn't know what people were gonna say in advance, so I wouldn't know how to apportion that time. So it probably wouldn't work out to say without any prior knowledge, you each get the same amount of time. Um, now that that anticipation has been kind of set up or would be set up in the future, that that would be written with a shorter amount of time. And I think in our discussions, what I'd like to do is have a time for the intro from staff because sometimes if, if something is very complicated, like affordable housing or workforce housing, that intro might be twenty minutes. And then if we've only allowed thirty, then we know deliberation's ten. So I would like to have times for staff presentation and times for our deliberation. So I think that as we move forward and implement this more efficient manner of rolling through the agenda and continue to have dialogue about how formal the advertising should be if we want to make it a specific time, if we want to employ that. Also, um, the idea that folks could contribute at a certain time. Um, I think that we've been in the past very flexible. Uh, if somebody wants to comment on a later agenda item, but they're not going to be there, that could be via email that they could give input and we, I would read or anyone could read, or they could provide input at the citizen input time. And so helping people understand that these multiple ways of input also are valid. Um, but I'm hearing that participation in the conversation in real time is of great value. So as we move forward, let's focus, um, I guess our efforts on that, uh, to achieve that goal. Tonight, though, with, I think what I'm hearing is that this agenda order, um, specifically what we're discussing, which I haven't asked for a motion yet because I really wanted to explore this. Um, uh, um, but I, I'm gonna entertain a motion now and then we can have more specific, if need be, dialogue on that very specific motion. Um, on agenda order, uh, the public hearing for the resolution of agenda order. So I'll entertain that motion right now, please.
Sorry, I'm sort of confused. Uh, is it the motion that the Board of Supervisors, um, adopt the resolution establishing the agenda order of business?
Yes.
For two thousand and twenty-two? This is Patty. You make that motion.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. And do we have a second?
I'm sorry, point of order.
Yes.
We already made a motion for this.
Thank you. I'm so sorry. Uh, thank you. Okay. Woo, all right. Thank you. Um, so we kind of meandered throughout that and didn't really stay, keep our discussion on the motion. So we've got a motion in a second. Thank you. And uh, I'll accept that. And is there any further discussion specific to the motion at this point in time? Okay, seeing none. Dave, I'll ask that you would do a roll call vote at this time.
I will indeed. Uh, this is presented as Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash one. Ms. Caldwell?
Uh, I.
Ms. Dinnany?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, motion passes unanimously. And next up is a public hearing on a resolution adopting the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors procedures. Uh, Dave, if you would introduce this. Thank you.
Thank you. Just briefly provided with your agendas, a copy of the resolution advertised for public hearing. As you noted, it establishes the uh, procedure. It, it adopts the procedures manual for the Board of Supervisors. Manual is not changed from two thousand and twenty-one, so substantively, it's all, uh, the same as it was. It describes the general responsibilities of the Board of Supervisors, how they operate as a collective board, correspondence, um, from other board members as well as citizens, how that becomes addressed, how board members represent themselves at authorities, boards and commissions, uh, both at cog and other regional committees, how supervisors interact with staff. And then I think probably one of the more, um, substantive items is how board members place items on the agenda for consideration. And that goes through a consent agenda process. If it moves off consent agenda, it goes on to the following, uh, meeting for discussion. And I think may, most of you are familiar with that process and how it's, how it, um, is applied. So I can answer any questions about it. Otherwise, it's all there for your review.
You much? Uh, thank you much. Um, this is a public hearing, so I'll entertain any public comment. It's time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
This is Hillary. I motion that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution adopting the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors Procedures Manu- Manual.
This is Patty. I'll second.
Do any discussion on the matter? Okay, seeing none. Dave, a roll call vote, please. Thank you.
This is presented as Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash two. Ms. Dinnany?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. And, uh, we've moved on to the last item on the agenda, which is adjournment. I'll, um, just to remind everybody, we're gonna be moving right into the regular meeting after this, so don't. just to remind everybody, we're going to be moving right into the regular meeting after this, so don't leave us. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is Patty. Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? Right, we are adjourned. Okay. And just shift to my other agenda. All right, I'll call to order the Monday, January 3, 2022, regular meeting of the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. And I will first turn it over to Dave in case he would like to further comment on how to participate by Zoom. Any further?
No, I would just remind everybody, if you're not talking, to stay muted and less acknowledged by the chair, particularly if you remember the public. Otherwise, everything is the same as it was for the reorganization.
Thank you much. With that, we'll move to citizens input for items that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, I'll move on to special reports. Dave Prabalka is up with the COVID-19 response report.
We have to do the minutes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was going off the short agenda where that is missing. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. That's my.
That's okay. That's all right. I hadn't yet scrolled down. No problem. It seemed too short. I'll entertain a motion to approve the December 6 and December 13, 2021 Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting Minutes.
This is Patty. So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'm, I'll second.
Thank you. Yep. And the rule on that, at least that we've operated by is that if you're not present for the meeting, you can't make the motion, but you can second and vote. So different organizations do it a bit differently. That's how we've done it in the past year. So if that came up as a question. Any comments on the minutes? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. All right, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to special reports.
Uh, thank you. On, on our COVID-19 response, there have been no operational changes since my last update. All meeting restrictions and staff assignments remain as they were reported on December 13. In Center County, there are 24,242 confirmed COVID-19 cases, total 291 deaths. There are 86,583 reported negative cases on the Pennsylvania COVID-19 dashboard. Around the state, the number of confirmed cases reached 1,727,079 with 36,799 deaths. Second on vaccinations, Center County data shows that 91,194 residents have been fully vaccinated, which is up significantly from the 89,708 reported on December 13. And another 12,814 have been partially covered. That brings our county's vaccination rate to 58.3% being fully vaccinated, 66.4% having received at least one dose. Just under 7 million Pennsylvanians are reported to have been fully vaccinated as of today. Next, as of January 3, Mountain Nittany Medical Center had 49 COVID-positive inpatients in their care, ranging in age from 29 to 89. 31 of the 45 patients hospitalized are unvaccinated and one patient was on a ventilator. The data is from Center, the data from Center Region Emergency Management Coordinator as of this morning. The data I just provided, I'm sorry about that. Regarding the over, including the Omicron variant, there are still five primary variants of concern. Just of, of note, where the reference, the local COVID-19 test site has been moved from the Nittany Mall to the transfer, to Transfer Road at the Center County Refuge and Recycling Center in College Township. It's walk-in only, no appointments necessary. And then in kind of related news, just as a reminder, the Centers for Disease Control has shortened the recommended time for isolation in public. People with COVID-19 should isolate for five days. And if they're asymptomatic or their symptoms are resolving without fever for 24 hours, follow that by an additional five days of wearing a mask, went around others to minimize the likelihood of spreading infection. All Ferguson Townships are, residents are strongly encouraged to receive the COVID-19 vaccination if they've not already done so. And that concludes my report. I can answer any questions you have. And thanks, everyone, for your patience as we continue to recover from this crisis.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions? Lisa?
Not a question, but thanks for sharing the, the change in the testing location. And I was wondering if Nick, the communications person and you all can continue sharing that. I think on Facebook is where I see it pushed out the most, that testing information and then the CVIM or other vaccination clinics that pop up. I appreciate you all sharing that. So if we can just keep that up. As now people are eligible for boosters. So that was my only comment. Thanks for the update.
Thanks, Lisa. Any others? Okay, thanks again, Dave, for your reporting on COVID. And we'll move on to unfinished business. First up is the review of the 2021 Ferguson Township Playground Safety Inspection Reports and Ms. Sentry Smartin. The St. Township Manager. Will introduce this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at, at the last regular meeting held on December 13, the board had requested the 2021 Playground Safety Inspection Report for review and discussion prior to the capital improvement plan, the CIP budget, as well as the operating budget development. Attached with this agenda is a copy of the letter report that's provided by the Township's zoning administrator, Mr. Wrestler, who provides this report to CRPR Director, Center Region Parks and Recreation, Ms. Alakankis. Mr. Wrestler plans to complete the 2022 Playground Safety Inspections prior to the CIP development and his expiration date of the Playground Safety Inspection Certification for the Board's review. I believe his Playground Safety Inspection Certification expires in July of this year. And I am happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you so much, Sentries. This is not an action item. It's just for discussion. I'll open that up to the board. I, I have a few observations that I'll share. Other than that, I very much appreciate the swift effort on this and the really straightforward and understandable presentation of it. Are there questions, comments, thoughts, anything anyone would like to discuss? Lisa?
Yeah, thanks very much for putting this together. And I just wanted to check in on the response time for getting those things corrected that were noted. And I guess your reflections on the process of that, how was the feedback that you received from the Playground Inspection Reports? And, and the follow-up and making sure that those things got taken care of.
Uh, thank you, Supervisor Strickland. That's a great question. And prior to COVID, it was a pretty streamlined process. We would receive the, the report from Mr. Wrestler and we would schedule a meeting and have discussion with the CRPR Director as well as the, um, the supervisor. Jim Carpenter would attend a meeting with Township Manager David Prabalka and I, and we would go through those itemized, the itemized list. And we would figure out, you know, who was, you know, which items that perhaps were on, that, that CRPR would refer to us as capital projects, as well as discuss maybe attentive timeline. Since COVID, I have to admit that there's been a little bit of a lag time in trying to manage our priorities with constraints and compete, or, you know, given our time constraints and competing priorities. So we, as you'll see in the letter report, that each one of the inspections were done at different times throughout the year for 2021. So there are some reports that we are still looking to coordinate and figure out what the, the follow-up plan looks like.
Thanks for that. And you addressed a different part of that question because I could see that some of those things would likely be considered a capital versus a maintenance item. So you're saying that you actually went through line by line on those reports, which are very thorough. So I just really appreciated seeing all that. And thanks for your explanation on the process.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Hillary, yes?
Yeah, just in term, kind of, you know, as we, as, you know, we kind of figure out like what falls under parks projects or capital parks projects or all that. And looking at particularly at Fairbrook and Autumn Wood and seeing that there is a lack of accessibility for certain folks to be able to attend those parks. Can you, can you give some insight as to what those would fall under? And if possible, give a projected timeline as to like when those specific projects might be addressed?
Sure, I'll, I'll certainly give it a, a try to answer your question. You said Holmes, you said Fairbrook Park and which other park?
It looks like Autumn Wood and Fairbrook are the ones that are specifically noted that there is either, there is either a pretty inaccessible path or no accessible path from like a parking area onto, onto a sort of play equipment or playground.
Yeah, so I, I can't give you a specific timeframe. What I will say is that we'll schedule a meeting here, Mr. Wrestler, myself, CRPR, as well as perhaps our assistant engineer also has a instrumental role in participating in that conversation. So we'll kind of talk through what's already being budgeted in the 2022 or what's in the CIP and something is identified in the letter, letter of report that isn't already budgeted, either in the CIP or in the operating budget. And that's something that we'll start to accrue that list and we'll have it for discussion, specifically capital projects related, which you know, improvements or enhancements involving accessibility is something that we would need to then bring to the board for their, for your consideration during the, the development of the capital improvement plan. Yeah, I will share with you that there is actually, there's a lot of, there's a lot of opportunity to to really kind of dig deep into the park system here. But I will say Fairbrook Park is actually one of the parks that's being, that, that's having a master plan update. So as we're, for the board members who are unaware, the township is doing a update to the Recreation Parks and Open Space Plan. So right now is a really great opportunity to try and get residents more involved. And I'm happy to share with the, the new, the, the board, a reminder of kind of the work that we've done by email and just kind of sharing opportunities. We are holding a future public meeting here in the near future. So there's a lot of opportunities to get involved, but, but staying on point here, Fairbrook Park is actually going to have a master plan update that will come in front of the board for, for approval.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Martin.
Um, I thought, I really appreciate that conversation. And so I, I wanted to then to clarify my thought. So we, I think, are having two, two related but, and simultaneous, but perhaps different conversations. The current agenda item, those are, all of those recommendations, are they solely constrained to playgrounds? Is, so for example, is the accessibility review, so, so when, when Mr. Wrestler goes in to do this safety playground safety inspection and make the report, the items that are captured about accessibility only, only relate to the playgrounds in the park and not necessarily overall accessibility of the park. That's, is that correct? Or, or does it include overall accessibility of the park? When we're looking at these playground reports, I don't think that is the case. Is that a clear question, Sentries?
I'm happy to ask Mr. Wrestler for the criteria that he references as part of his inspection. I mean, it's my understanding that it's predominantly, are primarily focused on the playground structure itself. So to the extent that he's, he's taking a bigger view in his assessment for his report, I would have to ask him. So I can get some clarification and bring that to the board when we bring the second or the 2022 Playground Safety Inspection.
Yeah, I can, I can actually address it too. He, he's not looking at, at accessibility of the site. And he's really not looking at ADA accessibility of the play equipment. He's primarily looking for safety issues, pinch points, areas that may have serrated edges or rust spots that might cause injury. So his, his lens is not at all related to accessibility of a park system or a, or a play amenity in a way we're thinking about it from like an ADA perspective. So you, you won't see in any of his reports, this, there's no stable slip-resistant surface or there's no access or parking or other issues. But you will see where there are pinch points or, or screws that are coming undone, broken welds, those kinds of things. But that's really the focus of his assessment.
Thank you. Thank you. Then just from the general thoughts of the board, just the focus, maybe when we do that master planning process for Fairbrook and thinking about that safety of the playground, but maybe accessibility generally. That could, that really could be something, a topic of discussion during the master planning process. Okay, okay, great. So is there any other discussion on the Playground Inspection Reports? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much, Sentries, and look forward to learning about the follow-up and then implications for capital improvement down the line. Thanks so much. Okay. Sorry, I actually have lost my agenda. There we go. Next up, we have new business. First, under that is the Consent Agenda. We have four items on that. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
This is Patty. I moved it, approval of the Consent Agenda as presented.
Just there a second.
Tiara, I'll second that.
You, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have the review of the Draft Zoning and Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance Amendment. This will be presented by Ms. Jenna Wargo, Director of Planning and Zoning. Jenna, you're up.
Thank you. In November of 2019, Township completed its comprehensive update to the zoning subdivision land development ordinances. Since that time, staff's been tracking errors and omissions while interpreting ordinances and we're recommending additional amendments to address these issues. So the board was provided with a draft during the November 1, 2021 meeting and the December 6, 2021 regular meeting and provided additional comments and recommendations to staff. Provided with the agenda is an updated copy of the draft ordinance amendments for the board to review during the December 6 regular meeting. The board offered staff to advertise a public hearing for February 7. Provided with the agenda is a redline version of the ordinance amendments as well as a clean copy. This was included as advertised for February 7, public hearing. And we also have part of those amendments was the conditional use for the storage of dirt piles. So there are some quick views included in there for the correct zoning districts, rural agricultural and the agricultural research zoning districts. So we're happy to answer any questions you may have on these amendments. I, the last time the board looked at this in December, the main amendments were overall height for the Terrace Street scape zoning district. The board wanted that to be decreased to 45 feet. Staff has gone in depth into that ordinance and tried to rip out anything that we could find that said otherwise to change that. And I think the other one was removing Cecil Urban and Surverden Park from the prohibited parks list for food trucks to operate within.
Thank you, Jenna, for that introduction. So this, uh, this is also a matter for discussion. Also, I, I made the request that this be put on the agenda in anticipation of the public hearing on February 7, just in case any new supervisor had any questions before being asked to vote. being asked to vote on it. Or if anybody at all wanted to propose any additional changes to incorporate into the draft, you might consider this, currently with the timeline, the last opportunity to do that. So theoretically, if, if we didn't want to have the public hearing on that date, we also would probably want to decide that tonight. And that's not the direction I would think we were going, because we have discussed this quite a bit. But I'm just wanting to be sensitive to everybody's, you know, position of being in seat to vote on this item. And it can be somewhat confusing, so. So first, any questions or comments? And then we'll move into any, any changes, any further changes that we might want to see. So any questions to Jenna? And I'll, I'll keep this to the board at this point in time and then go to, to, to the public after I, after we have some discussion. Any questions to Jenna? Okay. Looking like, and, and Ms. Dekler, did you have a question to Jenna or did you want to? Okay, I'll go to your question. Question to Jenna?
Tiara's hand is also raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me go to Tiara first. Question for Jenna?
Yes, sorry, you can't see my hand. I, I got the black emoji, so you might have to look a little harder sometimes. Jenna, so, and forgive me if I'm asking a cross question that's redundant. If I have to go back and look at it, I can look at it. The last locations that you gave off saying that they were rejecting the food trucks, was that because of the size of the food trucks or just because it was a food truck in general?
I think the original list that we included in the zoning ordinance amendments was to prohibit the use of trucks in certain parks. And it was directly related to the parking capacity in that aspect. And those were two parks that were included as being prohibited. And the board wanted to remove those two to be permitted, given different phasing of their master plans and whatnot and the eventuality of them having parking.
And are food trucks also considered anything that someone would hitch to their regular vehicle? Is that also considered a food truck? Or is it just, okay, thank you.
Question. Pam, did you want to have a question for, have a question for Jenna?
Yes, Jenna, on the, on the TSD on that 45 foot height, was that, is that going to be written in as a maximum? Because the way the TSD was like originally written, it was like, you must be this, this high and that, which seems kind of bizarre to me. But at any rate, is a 45 foot going to be a maximum height and not a demanded height?
The only thing that we've allowed to go above that 45 foot height for the zoning district is the workforce housing units being built in the unit. And that is still at 55 feet and it's only for the matching market rate units for building the workforce units. If they pay fee and lieu, if they build offsite, they do not get the additional market rate units. That's the only thing in there going above 45 feet right now. Everything else, staff did our best to look at the requirements. Corner buildings must be 55 feet, but we essentially just removed all of it. We've kind of addressed this as a stock gap. We are rewriting the zoning district this year. So we've kind of just removed most of the.
So the must be heights were pretty much removed and, and, and this was sort of put in as a maximum height. So if somebody wanted to build a three story, they could still build a three story, correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thanks for the question. Okay, let's then go into discussion if there's anything else that we want to consider adding or, or requesting staff to do any incorporation into the draft that comes back at the public hearing. And I'm thinking if we did want to incorporate changes, I know I'm jumping ahead. I don't know if we do. If we do though, Dave, because we're moving to public hearing, would you prefer that be done via motion?
I think so. And that'll help us to kind of develop a strategy to move forward if any of it's going to change.
Thank you. Okay, with that, let's go to discussion. Anything that anyone would like to bring? I have just one item if no one has. Lisa?
I have a few, but I didn't want to go first since I had a few in case somebody else had a shorter list.
No, go ahead, sure.
I'll go ahead. Okay, so just to jump back to the TSD and thanks Jenna. I feel like you heard everything from that last discussion and really captured it. So there are really very few things I had here. Back to the TSD and just to, so I understand from Pam's question, so there's no minimum required height at this point in the TSD?
Correct. What we've essentially done is had the max of 45 feet. Cannot go above that unless it's for the workforce units.
And let me find it on page, if I wrote this down right, I have page 18. There. It went to 65 with the incentive, 65 feet.
Page 18 of the clean draft?
Yeah, so on page, this is the redline copy.
Oh, that's why.
All right. So page 18 of 28 at the very, very top, number one, if a proposed development is complying and it's not to exceed 65 feet.
And if this is complying with.
So this is, this is complying with section 27 dash 716, the right.
That's the workforce housing.
Yeah, so the by right maximum height is 45 and maybe increase to accommodate, not to exceed 65. So should that read 55?
Oh yeah, it was 65 with our last amendment at the beginning of this year. And we didn't change it at staff level because we didn't really necessarily talk about the workforce units. So we left that. So yeah, that is an error on my part. We do allow up 65 feet if they're building workforce units within that multifamily building. And it's only for the market rate units. So the issue that the borough ran into with that development on South Atherton would not happen in that instance.
Right. So I think the incentive was an additional story or 10 feet, which would just bring it to 55 because we lowered that, the by right maximum to 45. So I think that should be 55 now.
Yeah, it should be. I don't, I don't even think it will make it up to 65 feet because of 45 feet, the amount of units you can get in there. They want to make it, but we can include that anyways.
Thanks. And then on, I'll do a parking one. So with, I guess this is also a question. So with bed and breakfast, the parking allowance would be 1.3, or the parking requirement would be 1.3 spaces. And I'm looking for where that is detailed. And I'm wondering how, how that's rounded and if that should rather be one space.
Typically, for this instance, it's your typical rounding, similar to what we do with the workforce housing ordinance. Point five, go up, everything else you round down. This is a new one for me. It's never come up in my time here.
Okay, so that would like, if there was a B and B with a, with one room, it would round down to just one required. Okay. And then just to clarify, so the difference between a bed and breakfast and a short-term rental, the similarity is that they're both required to be a primary residence, I believe, per the definitions in there.
I would need to look at the definitions of those two. I know for short-term rentals, there's a requirement that the owner must live in the house for six months out of the year. They need to provide proof of that. And how it differs from bed and breakfast, I'm not familiar with.
And that's where I started looking. I don't expect you to have this right now. So that's where I started looking at it and just the difference in the B and B and the short-term rental. Within the short-term rental, there's that, there's that written, there's that requirement for how often it's used as the primary residence. It has to be used a certain amount of time. And that wasn't in the B and B definition, though it said it had to be, I think it even said owner occupied, not just a primary residence. So I would want to look at changing that too, so that it could be, it might not necessarily need to be owner occupied. But that was just, that was a little bit of a fuzzy area I started getting into when I was looking at this. The difference that I could see between the B and B and the short-term rental with that, for the B and B, there's no use of the kitchen. You're only letting that room or rooms and then a meal, a breakfast meal can be provided and that was it. So.
And is the current concern that these definitions are too similar or?
That's where I was going, but then I, I felt like they're, they're not too similar because I, and I am asking if I'm correct, is that the, the B and B has no kitchen allowance? So, and it's only rented per night?
Bed and breakfast right now, it's owner occupied and then the rooms, all the rooms without cooking facilities. So I think the bed and breakfast definition differentiates between that and more of a kind of suite hotel situation where you're not getting any sort of kitchen and breakfast facilities in each individual room. And it's rented to guests on a daily basis, which is also short-term rental in a way. And it maybe serve breakfast, maybe served to guests by the proprietor of the facility. So it's really the act of the breakfast in the morning.
Okay, so that's, that's fine. I'm wondering if we need, if we want to have that be owner occupied or primary residence, that might, using primary residence is the defining term might be better, I don't know. But do we need to have a timeframe on that like there is in the short-term rental?
That's up to the board. I would say at a staff level, we have never come across issues with bed and breakfasts and short-term rentals. In fact, I would think parking is to the benefit of the individual doing a short-term rental over the bed and breakfast. Dave, do you have any history of these bed and breakfasts in township? I've never been aware of any issues we've had and differentiated between the two.
No, in, in fact, when we modified our regulations years ago to account for and regulate short-term rentals, it was largely to mirror the two, understanding that a bed and breakfast is a lot more of a commercial establishment as opposed to what may be more of a hobby or kind of additional income or supplemental income for a residential homeowner. But for, for most applications, it was, and, and even in 2013, 2014, when the pressure was starting to be placed on municipalities to regulate these uses, it was actually from the bed and breakfast community saying, hey, we've got to do all this. So should they, they should have to get a rental housing permit. They should have to pay hotel tax, et cetera. So I mean, the, the, the two are very similar and a lot of that was with intentionality or with intent. But you know, I guess there are some nuances, which I think you called out correctly. Other than that, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. And I don't think it's, you know, if there had been issues with that or, you know, if other communities have had issues with that, maybe we want to add some kind of the similar language in there that we have for the short-term rental. I'm not arguing strongly for that. I think it's, you know, as it seems, there's not a real issue with that. But it's, I think it's worth noting that that's not in there.
Lisa, could I ask a question before we move on from this topic? Just about, you know, the recent change of moving the parking requirements into the SALDO, which enables the board to grant modifications if they're requested and we feel it's warranted. In the case of, I'll say both either, B and B or a short-term rental, as staff goes through the process of considering the application, how does the knowledge that the, the board can grant modification, how, how does that play into the assessment of that as a viable activity at that location? So for example, let me make that concrete. So for example, if somebody in Pine Grove Mills wanted to start a bed and breakfast but didn't have their required off-street parking requirements met, could the board grant a modification to allow for on-street parking? And if we did, how would you, like, how would that ever get to us? I don't, that's not, I don't understand how that works. And yeah, that's my.
So biggest thing that I can say between differences of these two uses, short-term rentals are completely within the zoning ordinance. So any variances that would be needed for short-term rentals, that all goes to zoning hearing boards. So the board would never see those. Bed and breakfast, unless there is an additional regulation within supplemental regulations in zoning, that the parking requirements related to those use, that use of bed and breakfast, that is in SALDO. So the board would see that in that instance. I need to make sure that bed and breakfast, we don't have that in supplemental regulations with, and then we do.
I think it is, because I thought, I think that's the problem. I think that it then, I, that's maybe where the issue lies. If, so if it's in there in supplemental, then we can't grant a modification. So is the solution to, is the pathway to enable, if the, the situation should occur, to enable our ability to do that and they don't have to go to variance hearing board, zoning hearing board, would it be to remove that line from the supplemental regulations and just allow the SALDO to cover it? Would that be what we would want to do?
I don't think so because you, you're not, we're not considering short-term rentals commonly through the land development process as opposed to like a bed and breakfast.
No, I'm sorry, I'm referring to bed and breakfast right now.
Oh, you're referring to a bed and breakfast as opposed to, okay, I, I had that. So, you know, even still, it would only come up through land development. I mean, that's, you know, if I were an existing B and B or if I was doing an interior renovation or something like that, where I wanted to start using my place as a bed and breakfast, that would have to be triggered as a land development requirement in order for those parking regulations to come in front of the board.
Okay, so as things are constructed right now, the parking requirement for bed and breakfast does not fall under the SALDO because it's not a land development plan. It's just a permit process. But unless there's an expansion like they indicated, okay. Okay, so thank you. Thank you for that understanding. I then, I guess there isn't any change to propose tonight?
No, I suppose not. I guess my, you know, my final comment on that would be that the B and Bs, like the short-term rentals are permitted in multiple zoning districts. So you know, and my, my thought was if we, do we need that required term of primary residence use noted in that? If that's what we're saying that the B and B is.
I, I think it's, I think it's, could be maybe more restrictive, restrictive than necessary. But I, I, I don't know, I, did, does staff have a concern about removing that from the B and B definition?
I think that it's in there for a reason and without being able, I was not here for the. I think that it's in there for a reason. And without being able, I was not here for the complete discussion on update to these ordinances. Um, knowing what I do know about our ordinances, the fact that we have B and Bs and supplemental regulations means that there's a majority of that use that is permitted by conditional use. Um, so that is an area where the board would get involved. I would not recommend doing anything without time to review what that could potentially do. And I'm sure that there's a lot of um law cases out there that can back up the reason why B and Bs and how they are different from short-term rentals and that owner occupied aspect to them.
Well, the, the owner occupied, I mean, if it's not, if it's a place that's for rental without owner occupants, it's a hotel.
It's a hotel.
It's, it's essentially the category it would fall under. So having, having the owner occupied restriction on it provides for that different kind of establishment, uh, which may be more suited to certain zoning districts as opposed to others.
Okay, and I'm not suggesting we remove that whatsoever. In fact, I'm suggesting we add the requirement of a certain time of residency by the, by the either owner or tenant. So, but we can, we can leave that as is right now. We'll just leave that and not, because I, I do not want to remove that primary, primary residence requirement on there. The last question I have, I guess second to last, on the food trucks, we had talked about the the allowance in parks and um where they are allowed to park. Currently, it says that they're allowed to operate in one location for thirteen weeks. And so my concern last time we talked had been that somebody could park somewhere in the park and stay there for the summer. And there just wasn't, uh, there weren't any constraints on where they could park other than they cannot obstruct or use an ADA spot. So I'm thinking about the small main parking lot at Two Deck. What is to prevent somebody from taking up five or six spaces in that parking lot? Or am I missing something where that's restricted?
Right now, based on the direction that we've received from the board and planning commission, it was tried to make this portion of our ordinance as least restrictive as possible. I think the thirteen-week timeline came from other municipalities in the region and what they've allowed. Uh, currently, our ordinance, we require them to uh relocate every single night. They cannot stay there for more than a day at a location. Um, our ordinance really only speaks to uh being located in that parking lot. And that is maybe an area that we can discuss um via the resolution that we are also going to adopt in coordination with uh CRPR on this portion of our food trucks and working with them. So there's some things that we've included in the zoning ordinance for food trucks that are more of the prohibited. So you'll notice there are streets on there that you cannot operate on. There's parks that we will not allow. And it maybe it's within that resolution that the board will adopt later on of these issues that we're coming up with right now.
Thank you. And the, the thirteen weeks, I recall, you know, when, when the ordinance first came about, you know, it does make sense. I'm not arguing with the thirteen weeks at all. I think my concern is really specifically focused on parking within the parks because that's a public area. If there were to be a food truck parked at a business for thirteen weeks and they want to stay there overnight, or say at a place of assembly and they are, you know, operating out of there for thirteen weeks, that usage and the length of time seems very different to me than a, a food truck parking for the summer in you know, in that, say, small parking lot at Two Deck, when there's no constraint whatsoever about how many spots they're allowed to take up, where exactly they're allowed to leave their truck for those thirteen weeks. And so I feel like we're, I think there needs to be some other parameters on that. And I'm, I'm wondering if just pulling, you know, separating that park parking from the rest makes sense.
I, I also share your concern. I think that, so to contextualize this conversation, our, our, what we endeavored to do was to remove restrictions on food truck operations in the township in a general manner because they were really restricted and we felt it was about of an outdated management of their endeavor. But we're wanting to be careful, we don't, uh, you know, move too far in the other direction. And I completely agree with your assessment of there is no need for us to be um concerned about that being on private property. I was under the impression that there still needed to be a zoning permit written by the zoning administrator. And at that time, there was going to be a consideration of not the duration of time, but I'm breaking this into two parts. The, the location, like if they said, oh, we want to use seventeen spots right here in the middle of the parking lot, uh, the zoning administrator would have the opportunity to say, no, this is, this is the way we would be comfortable, fire access, yada, yada, so on and so forth. Um, that was my impression. Is that incorrect, Jenna?
That is correct. All food trucks will need to get a zoning permit from the zoning officer uh the first um of the year. At that time, that's typically when for new food trucks that we say, okay, where you, where you want to operate, provide us like smack, where are you going to sit, stuff like that. And that's really been the change here in this ordinance that is at a staff level, we would review that and say, okay, this is fine. Um, they are to provide us with their updated location as they move throughout the township in that year. That doesn't always happen. And unless we hear a complaint, we don't really know it's happening. And so that would be my only thing I can add for this. I see the concerns with uh parking, permanent, permanent-like parking in parks uh for food trucks and does it get to a limit? I mean, technically, these parks are owned by Ferguson Township. Does it ever get to a point where we can actually be the private property owner? Really, Gary, you've been here too long. Um, or, yeah, we've permitted your one food truck and not for you to take up all of these parking spaces. So nobody can actually come to the park and recreate at the park.
So my, my personal thought on this is that, why don't we, why don't we not allow food trucks to remain in our parks overnight except for by special permit? So that would require, so what we've allowed, which was different before, before they weren't really able to operate in publics, our public parks. Now we are allowing them to operate, but instead of going straight to, you can stay there for thirteen weeks. I, I'm, red flags definitely are flying up because the idea was to provide opportunity for variety and for the public to have food trucks come to events and that kind of thing. And this would be not, it would be in contradiction to that kind of a, an allowance. So can we simply keep everything else the same and not allow food trucks to remain overnight in public parks with that? Would that, because then there's the zoning permit process where the administrator is saying, okay, you can park in these four parking spaces, not in the right of way, et cetera, et cetera. That's being updated throughout the year as things change. There's still an approval of the zoning administrator and it's never overnight. Would that, can we arrange it in that manner?
Uh, we can. And the only thing I would add for the comment on unless by special permit or special and would that be by staff? Because that was, I think, the biggest thing that came out of planning commission was recognizing that food trucks, they need to be mobile, they need to be agile and change quickly and waiting for.
Not wait for two weeks. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense.
Alright.
So let's, let's then move, uh, because we wanted to do this by formal motion. Lisa, could you, could you move that for us?
Possibly. So we are, let me, I get this wording right first. So we are uh going to say that food trucks are not permitted to park overnight in township parks unless approved by, unless given special permission.
By staff.
By staff.
So I'll make that, yeah, I second that motion.
I'm sorry, just for my clarity, could she say that again, just all the way through there?
So I'll move that we amend the uh this, the draft of the zoning um amendments to prohibit parking by food trucks in township parks overnight unless given special permission by staff.
And I'll second that. Yep, Hillary.
Yeah, just, just clarifying tha- that there is still a possibility for them to receive permit, like express permission from the township. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, and Lisa, I believe you had one other item.
Thanks. Um, and thanks for that. Uh, so Jenna, could you just point me to the um dirt pile line in the quick views?
Scroll down. So it's called storage of land clearing material. It'd be permissible in the area in both category one. It's conditional use. That is for ag research as well as rural ag. The storage of land clearing material, area in both category one, conditional use.
So those are a principal use. I was thinking that would be accessory. So.
Given the extent of what these dirt piles are, you don't fit um anything else really on that lot. That is a principle.
Okay.
Could we clarify for a moment dirt pile? Um, such absurd conversation. So dirt pile being that uh very large, like, I'm, I'm going to call it landfill. It's not trash, it's, it's, it's fill, fill depository versus the dirt pile that is in the, I believe it's the landings, I'm not sure, the, the development rate. So are both of those categories of dirt pile falling under this? Because principal use, accessory use, byproduct of construction, how do, how do we understand that as they relate to dirt piles?
Let me see if I can find the definition of that land clearing material. There is something in there about. I believe my understanding of this, the intent is to address the pile that we have out along Nixon um related to land developments and storage of this fill material is non-hazardous. And
They're, they're really both the same category of full site under our current regulations, meaning we don't have any regulations that apply. They're both, they're both permitted fill sites. So are they, they're both permitted sites rather, meaning they have NPDES uh permit requirements, they need to control for erosion, uh, they're supposed to be seeded and things like that. But one is kind of fill material that's been placed as part of a development construction. The other is fill material that's been established as part of significant amounts of development. So it's a lot bigger. That's the one that's on Nixon Road. Um, but I mean, if the question is, would we categorize them the same in our zoning ordinance? I, I don't know that we would call a fill site an accessory use. It's, it's not really something that's done in conjunction with a primary use. It would be its own classification entirely, meaning the fill site out on Nixon Road is not somebody's house who also happens to have a fill site or somebody's, you know, retail store who also has a fill site. That is the primary use uh of that, of that lot. So I, I don't know how you'd fit it in cleanly, no pun intended, into a, into an accessory use category unless there were some, it was some obvious accessory use to another primary. Even a, even a construction area, planned residential development is in the case of the landings. The primary use is not PRD. The primary uses are the single-family homes lot by lot. And you wouldn't say one of those has an accessory use, which is this fill site area. Nor would you really say that out on Nixon.
Can I ask a question then? But so Lisa's question was about the principal use nature of it. And so then referring to PRD site, the primary principal use is single-family homes. And, but now we're talking about it as being the primary use is the fill site. And I think that's why I was thinking about it as an accessory use. So.
Well, there, there are different primary uses within a PRD. Some might be commercial, some might be retail, some might be, and many are residential. But uh it, it wouldn't, there wouldn't be a primary use for the overall development. It would be uh the, the subdivision itself would have each subdivided lot would have its own principal use.
Lisa, back to you. I, that's.
Thanks. That answered the question. I was looking for it under accessory, but I understand by the, the size, the scope of those, they can't be under accessory. Um, you know, but we, we don't address the one on Bristol. And for um the new members joining us, if you're not, you're probably familiar with the large dirt pile on Bristol Road. But the landings, that's piles like that are what we're talking about. So that one still isn't addressed in this. So and I, I guess, you know, it won't be right now. So we don't have to get in on that right now. But uh just to clarify that that one is not uh it part of this. And that's all I have.
Remember that a, a zoning amendment is, is not going to apply to existing uses. It'll only apply prospectively, not retroactively. So if we did implement additional restrictions, regulations in an effort to get that dirt pile gone, it, it wouldn't matter. They would be a grandfather use in our old regulations.
Thanks. Okay. Um, I will then um present my, my question. Um, so uh to contextualize it, one re- revision was to further define places of assembly by categorizing them. Um, Jenna, maybe help me out here into regional community and I think three categories.
Uh, let's see, I had it up. So we, in the current ordinance amendment, reverting back to what we had originally solely related to um how to define each assembly, place of assembly. So there's three, we have a community and neighborhood regional. Um, before it was kind of hard to differentiate between the three of those because we had removed this occupancy which strictly related to the size of the building. So that is what staff had recommended to be included back in. It's hard for us to say, oh, no, this church is a neighborhood place of assembly, but this church over here, that's a community one and they're different. And so we wanted to retain that ability based on the gathering size of the room, what their occupancy is. That's how we're going to be defining these places of assembly.
Okay. Uh, thank you. And so um, so this, this effort here is is to address any, maybe not necessarily errors, but omissions or changes from our big uh revision that happened last year or the year before. I'm sorry, I lose track. But in that revision, there was some language that was then located at twenty-seven dash two oh four A dash two three that talked about adjunct uses associated with places of assembly. The, the, the text, my recollection was, we in that revision wanted to do away with the concept of adjunct uses because it popped up very infrequently in the code. And we wanted to, when we wanted to preserve the intent of those clauses that we would integrate. And we wanted to, when we wanted to preserve the intent of those clauses, that we would integrate it in a different manner, not utilizing the adjunct use concept. So that, so I'll just briefly read. It's, it's a short paragraph that relates to what we used to define as adjunct uses to places of assembly. Adjunct uses that are associated with a civic or faith-based place of assembly must be operated by the same organization for use by its members and their guests. Such facilities may be rented on a temporary basis for fundraising or charitable events associated with the organization, but may not function full time in a manner that would qualify as a business-based place of assembly. So when we remove, my understanding Jenna, so first I'm going to confirm, when we removed, we did indeed complete the task of removing that clause from the zoning, from the zoning ordinance. Is my first confirmation correct?
I cannot find that in our current ordinance, so I'm assuming so. I'm gonna.
Or could I? So, thank you. Okay. Okay. So the, the portion, so, so I'm, I'm less concerned about the, the first sentence being dropped and it being must be operated by the same organization. I think that places of assembly frequently have other organizations utilize their facility and that we should encourage that. However, the, the omission of the qualification that it may not function full time in the manner that qualifies as a business-based place of assembly, I think is a problem area. And I would like to see if we could integrate that information back into the code. And the reason is this. My understanding anyway, is that the way the current code is written, those places of assembly essentially could host a for-profit business and not need the, the zoning permit that would be included typically in that process of doing that business at that place because of the way we've defined places of assembly. So I would really like to qualify that those activities still cannot be functioning in the manner of a business, that they have to be related to a non-business, as we had it in here, related to the, 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 the organization or based on a fundraising or charitable events or the functioning in the full-time manner is really my concern. And so why? Because we have places of assembly all over the township in every zoning district. And if we're allowing basically a business to operate in a R1 residential district, that's going to probably cause conflict. So I think that this content of the code was really important to preserve. And I'd like us to consider adding that back in. So first I'll open it up to questions and then discussion. And first questions from the board. And then we'll go to questions from the audience and then we'll discussion the board, audience, residents, sorry. Questions from the board. Okay, Bill, did you have a question or did you want to participate in the dialogue?
Well, I don't know the difference between the two. I am the president, for example, of the Baileyville Community Hall in the western end of the township. And the inclusion of what you are recommending will take away a major source of income for that facility because we hold auctions there. A private business who is an auctioneering business holds their auctions in this public place of assembly, the Baileyville Community Hall. And, and it has been a long time function at the hall. And based on what I think I'm hearing you say, that activity would no longer be permitted at that location. And I'm here to say, at least at the moment, that, that's very unacceptable to, to, to me as the chairman and the president of the hall without further discussion.
No, let me, let me clarify with staff. My understanding, just referring to the previous conversation, previous discussion within this discussion is that that, that change would not affect any current, current uses. So my understanding is that it would not affect Baileyville Hall at all. And so Jenna or Dave could confirm that.
I'm sorry, I have a point. I don't, um, to disrespect Mr. Bill or anyone. But I'm looking here and it says that the, the public hearing on this will be on the seventh. So are we taking public comments now and on the seventh? I'm just trying to figure out what exactly. I'm just confused. Sorry about that.
Sure. I'm specifically definitely taking public comments now because the intention would be we would make any changes to, to, and we also will take public comment on the hearing. But at that time, if we did change our minds and want to make changes, we'd have to then re-advertise. And there's a cost to that. It's not terrible, but it's helpful if we know now as opposed to finding out later. So since this directly affects Bill and I'm, I'm sensitive to that and that organization. And I, I wanted to make sure that we did allow for that, that discussion. Does that, does that clarify your point of order question?
Not really, because if we are going to have public hearing on the seventh, are you saying that we're just letting the community say what they have to say and we're not going to implement or have further discussion about what they want? I guess I'm, I'm still a little confused. Maybe I'm not asking the question the proper way.
No, I think I'm probably not conveying it. My intention would be to now, because we're discussing this topic and might make a change, allow for public comment now and potential changes. And also knowing going into the public hearing, if a new issue came up or a new thought about a previous issue, we would still have deliberation and discussion and have an opportunity to change that at that time. If we did do that, we'd have to then schedule another public hearing. Dave, did you want to add anything to that? I maybe not, and maybe I'm not explaining that good.
Oh, no, I don't have anything to add to that. We can answer the question about the, the applicability of the, this revised regulation to the use of the auction use at Baileyville.
Great.
And, and that's a little bit trickier. I, I think the difference is if, if we're talking about an existing use that's not changing that like that fill site at, in Bristol Avenue. Or, you know, if you decided, the board decided you wanted to take out a certain category of industrial use from IRD, those uses would be allowed to continue. This is a little bit nuanced because as opposed to a, a primary use of the facility. For example, you couldn't remove places of assembly from the rural residential zoning district. And then say to Baileyville, sorry, you can't be here anymore. That, that, that would not, that would be a grandfather use. But for this use, which they, which kind of changes and they come, they apply for noise permits and, and considerations of the like. That, that may, they may be subjected to new standards. So I don't know that I have the answer to that. Perhaps Jenna does. Probably, I mean, because there are certain allowances of, of, under which a non-conformity can still operate. But those allowances have, have an end to them. They're not just, you know, carte blanche, do whatever you want. Many of them are dimensional related to renovations and expansions of the property and things like that. But there are other restrictions as well on how a non-conformity can continue to operate as a non-conformity. If regulations change, it would just be a matter of finding out where this specific use falls in that spectrum. Is it going to continue to be allowed as a grandfather use? Or is it something that the new regulations would apply to and therefore it'd be prohibited?
Okay, so before going to Hillary's hand, so the, the, the question that I started with, with the zoning administrator was to, to try to understand what exactly the use was because my understanding is the use is places of assembly. The use isn't, let's take Bill's example, auction house. So the non-conforming use is not places of assembly. Places of assembly is still a conforming use.
Correct.
The auctioning is definitional. And we would change that definition, but it wouldn't change that primary use into a non-conforming primary use was how I was understanding that. If we could ask for Jenna's thoughts on what I just said, and then we'll go to Hillary.
I think we're going to need to have the solicitor weigh in on this because we're getting into something of principal use versus a temporary use. And that's the issue that I think the manager is really trying to hit home here. There are differences. And there are allowances for the pre-existing non-conforming use for properties, but that has to be that principal use. And because this auction aspect, the issue at hand is not that permanent use of this site. That's where I think we're going to run into the issues.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think we'll definitely want to look at this more carefully. Neither Jenna nor I are going to be able to answer this right away, but I could go either way. It might be that they'd be allowed to continue that use under the non-conformity allowance, because I know, I see, I see your point that, that the use is still conforming. The definition is changing. It'd be tantamount to changing a dimensional restriction or something. Use is permitted, but there's other restrictions or encumbrances. So we, we would just have to find out where that, that line is and how this would fall.
Thanks. Thanks so much. Hillary, I'll, I'll go to you. And then Bill, before you, I wanted to, to wrap up a thought there. Hillary.
I'm considering I'd like to make a motion if possible. I'll cede the floor to Mr. Kio to make sure he's able to say what he wants to say before making a motion.
Bill?
Thank you, Hillary. While the auction is, is one example. Sometime in, in March of this year, the Baileyville Community Hall is going to be hosting Schwartz fire safety business in Balfour. And they are, we're going to be hosting a fire safety day. And Mr. Schwartz and his business are going to be able encouraged to sell fire extinguishers and, and smoke alarms and the kinds of things that he has as part of their business to people out here in the rural community, including the farmers. I certainly wouldn't want that event because we're using a private business and he is in fact selling his goods at the community hall to, to be something that we can't do anymore. Thank you.
Laura, you're muted.
Thank you. Before I go to ask Hillary for her motion, I wanted to clarify for Bill and others that you know, in, in, I know you don't have the text in front of you and I apologize for that, but it, the, the, the function full time in a manager, in a manner that would qualify, function full time in a manner that would qualify, I think is an important phrase in this consideration because this example that you've given of Schwartz would not, it, it's not at all function in a full, in a full time, full time in, in a manner. So I would, I, I, I would not think that that would be interpreted in that manner. And Bill, my, my intention is not to be restrictive to Baileyville Hall, but here's the thing. Again, these places of assembly, they are in all kinds of zoning districts. And so while the auctioning that's outdoors might be a fine use, might be a fine use at that Baileyville Hall, it's not necessarily a fine use in, at every place of assembly. So I don't want to be restrictive, but this is a, an issue that I think that we maybe could address. So with that said, Hillary, did you have a motion you wanted to put forward?
Sure do. Um, since it seems like we've had a good bit of deliberation on this and it seems as though it behooves the board as well as the public to receive more information from Jenna and Dave after they've spoken to a solicitor. I'd like to table this conversation so that we can move forward with the agenda items.
I second.
Thank you.
Okay, the discussion on the motion. Hillary, you've made it. So you have the floor, should you choose?
Hey, open it up to the board.
Okay. I, I would concur with moving the dialogue forward. Past practice, we've been more direct about directing staff to make that effort, but if that is clear and they're satisfied with that direction, I would have nothing else to, to add to that motion. So I would want to ask staff. Is that, is that clear?
I think given the amendments that we've received from that December meeting, from this meeting, in order to meet our requirements for review of this, for CRPA specifically, they get forty five days to review these amendments. We're getting to the point where at substantial amendments. And these are significant changes. I've already provided them this as we see it tonight two weeks ago. And I think if we are serious about including these additional amendments, we're going to be out past that February seventh public hearing. And I'm okay with that. I haven't sent out CDT advertising, knowing that we'd be looking at this tonight. So just so the board is aware, I don't think we'd be able to hit that public hearing on seven.
Yeah, I think we're fine in that regard. I mean, if, if we're making changes, I think Jenna's right. We're past the February seventh date. The scheduled public hearing, which we kind of anticipated might be the case. What we do is we'll present this back on the board agenda for January eighteenth, follow up on some of these questions and any others that may be presented before we continue the discussion. And at that point, we might be better prepared to authorize advertisements of a public hearing for a date that'll meet that requirement. So we'll just push it back.
Great. And I don't know if Tiara or Lisa had their hand up first. Lisa.
Um, thanks very much. Just on the motion of tabling this, I'll comment to you first. I think, yes, that makes sense. I think I'm wondering, Jenna, is this last item the most substantial that we need to discuss further or, or were other items something we need to discuss further? And if, if it's just this last place of assembly item, should we break that out into a separate discussion?
What I really wanted to talk about, this solicitor we have meeting with her on Wednesday morning, was the amendments from that December, December sixth meeting. Because the board reviewed that draft and included the amendment for Terrace Street Skip District on the height, while it seems like an easy button. That, that was a significant part of that ordinance and I would define that as substantial, but I need our solicitor to define that as a substantial amendment. So it's really from that previous meeting in December.
Gotcha. That's fair. Thanks for that. And I think, you know, I thought having it on the seventh was really optimistic. And I'll just reflect back that this is a really big item. So this required, this was a major undertaking to amend and update the zoning ordinances. This is where we're at right now is fixing things from that update. So this did require a lot of discussion and just to kind of reflect back earlier on taking public comment now, it, it is helpful in that it does save other time in the future so that you're coming at each meeting with a more fleshed out piece of work so that you're, you're already working through some issues. So so just to, just kind of comment on, this was a big, a big item. And so I'm, I'm not troubled that it's not going to be on the seventh. I think that's okay.
Thank you. And Tiara.
Yes, my only other suggestion would be for us to review again the amendments that Jenna's speaking about from December, also reviewing the ones that we've done today prior to meeting again on the eighteenth. And any of the intricate questions that perhaps Dave or Jenna might not be able to answer at this moment, they might have to go further. We could possibly email those to them and somehow get them back. Maybe we could review those and then that way we could have a more productive cohesive convert, because I feel like we asked a lot of questions and then we had to have the conversation versus if we ask those conversations ahead of time, we can just have the discussion and dialogue. That's all.
Sounds great. Sounds great. Okay, so there was a motion in a second. I'll ask for a vote. Sounds like we're on favor, but all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And so we will proceed with the agenda. Next up is acceptance of the resignation of David Prabalka Township Manager, introduced by David Prabalka Township Manager.
Thank you. Provided with the agenda is a copy of
Thank you. Um, provided with the agenda is a copy of my letter of resignation as Township Manager effective February twenty-eighth. I'd just really like to note that being a part of this community for these last nine years has been really one of the great honors of my life. And this decision's been very difficult. Um, couple of acknowledgements, if I may, I want to express my sincere appreciation to the current Board of Supervisors as well as those in the past. Uh, some of whom are, are no longer with us for allowing me this honor. Um, during my tenure, I've seen a lot of people come and go in many capacities with different agendas, different ideologies, different political backgrounds. But everybody, without exception, has served Ferguson Township because they want to see it thrive. Um, and as a manager, that's all I could have ever hoped for. Um, I want to thank the men and women that I've had the privilege of working with on our authorities, boards and commissions for all your hard work and volunteerism. Uh, I want to thank the leadership team that, uh, uh, supported me over these years, Chris Albright, Dave Modricer, Centris, Martin, Angela Colkey, Jenna Wargo and Eric Anderson. And really want to thank all the staff at the township. Uh, it really is a, a great group of the most dedicated and professional people that I've ever been able to work with. Most importantly, I, I want to thank the residents of Ferguson Township. I've been so inspired by each and every one of you. And while I look forward to the new opportunity that awaits me, I'll never forget the people that I've had the privilege of encountering just about every day on the job here. So thank you all.
Well, thank you, Dave. Um, thank you for your service and all that you've, uh, brought to the township. I didn't prepare anything eloquent, uh, but sincere thanks to you and, um, you know, if, if any other board members, uh, felt inclined, um, they certainly could, um, make any comments. Um, let's entertain a motion first. Um, and that, that will be found in, in the recommended motion will be found in your agenda.
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors accept the resignation of Township Manager Dave Prabalka effective February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two.
This is here. Oh, Hillary can second.
Well, um, who was last time in the competition for the second? Um, okay, uh, Hillary, uh, it's you. For the recording secretary will make it clear. Hillary seconded. Um, if anybody would care to, to say any words, um, an opportunity is now. Okay.
Thanks very much, Dave. We appreciate you and everything you've contributed and this is, uh, you know, it's difficult, but we're happy for you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Yes, we are very happy for you. Um, and, uh, thank you very much for your service. Uh, with that, let's go ahead and vote on the motion. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, next up, we have the award of contract to GovHR USA to conduct an executive recruitment for the position of Township Manager, introduced by Dave Book, a Township Manager.
Thank you. Um, unless you want to just hold my seat open, I presume that you'd want to hire a manager to succeed me as township, uh, as Township Manager or candidate. So typically the way executive recruitments would, would, uh, operate would be that the board would a- award a contract to a firm's qualified to conduct a, uh, national search or, or depending on what net you elect to cast. In, uh, in the past, with past recruitments, including my own recruitment and, and the police chiefs, um, we've used the firm GovHR out of Illinois. Um, they are a very capable, uh, search, executive search firm specializing in local government. They're familiar with Pennsylvania and the nuances of, of local government here that perhaps don't apply in other states. So, uh, they're, they're also very familiar with the council manager form of government, have a tremendous network of qualified individuals that they can reach out to as part of their recruitment efforts to ensure that the most qualified uh, person or pool of applicants are presented to you all as, as the Board of Supervisors for your consideration. So uh, there is an engagement letter and, um, and contract essentially for services that's provided with your agenda. I can answer any questions you might have about that. The scope of work is fairly well-defined in there. So we've had a chance to look at that. There's also opportunity for customization. If there are things that the board wants to include um, that perhaps aren't in the standard engagements, GovHR is, has always been very capable of accommodating those requests. Um, if you elect to move forward with GovHR, once I execute the contract documents, I will begin to set up, uh, uh, some discussions with board members about how you want to proceed with the recruitment and what some next steps are after that. So that, that's all I have to say to introduce it.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, there is a recommended motion in the agenda. I'll entertain.
This is Hillary. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Supervisors award the contract to GovHR USA to conduct an executive recruitment for the position of Township Manager.
This is Tiara. Second that motion.
Do any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, next up is the staff and committee reports. Uh, under cog committee reports, there's just the executive committee. The really only topic of that meeting, uh, was the, um, executive director evaluation, which we we recessed to executive session for. So there's no, there's no minutes for something like that. There were no other committee reports. Uh, Dave, uh, we're moving to you with staff report, the managers' reports.
Uh, yeah, just, uh, briefly, only one point I want to highlight in my report is that I'm tentatively scheduled to be out of state next week. I was planning on appointing Centris Martin as acting Township Manager. My plans are a little bit up in the air, do some personal things that I'm dealing with, but, um, if, if anything changes, I'll notify the board. Otherwise, I, I intend to be out of the office, uh, next week. Um, there's some other general items of interest in my report, but that's all that I should want to highlight.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, any questions for Dave? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to communications to the board. Any communications to the board, anyone cares to share? Okay, we'll move on to calendar items. Several are noted. We have our regular meetings. Nothing, um, other than the regular meetings are noted at this. Oh, I'm sorry. Coffee and conversation, uh, in addition to our regular meetings will happen at the Baileyville Community Hall Saturday, January fifteenth, and all are invited to attend. Uh, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Tiara would like, oh, sorry. I, Tiara would like to move that we adjourn this meeting. Okay, sorry.
And I, I'm going to start the practice of taking a second, but no vote. So is there a second on the adjournment? Second is noted by Ms. Caldwell and we are adjourned. Thank you. Good night.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.